Okay, it's four o'clock. We'll get started. Um, we are all here. Any public comments?
None.
Thank you. First item of the agenda. Review of the minutes. I move to approve.
Yeah, move to approve. Did you?
I did.
Oh, okay, then I'll second.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Approved five zero.
Thank you. Um, second item under current business is election of the president of the Library Board of Trustees. While I have had such a fun time doing it for the past two years, it is time to pass the torch. And with that, I'll open it up. Is there any current Library Board of Trustees members who are interested in serving as president?
I am.
Yay, Mary Bell. Anyone else? Okay, great. Well, I, um, we're, yeah, we do.
Do you want to nominate her?
Yeah, I was just gonna nominate. I nominate Mary Bell to serve as the next president of the Library Board of Trustees. I need a second.
I second that.
Voting's open.
Approved five zero.
Amazing. Congratulations, Mary Bell. Thank you. Yay. Does she take over now?
Yeah, it's up to you. It doesn't matter, because I'll make the note when this switches on the minutes. So if you want to take over, you can't, you don't have to switch seats. I'll make, you know what I mean?
It's totally up to you. I've done this two years, Mary Bell. Two.
You don't have to switch seats.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
It's, you can just stay there, but if you want to just gavel it.
I think, um, am I finishing the meeting today?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you. Okay. Next item is election of secretary for the Library Board of Trustees. Francis is currently serving. Is there anyone who would like to take over that spot? Giselle, would you like me to tell you what the secretary does?
I nominate Giselle.
Sure. Why don't you tell me more?
Okay, so Francis could give you more information if you'd like, but the secretary is the backup in case the Library Board of Trustees president cannot make it. Like, for one time, I couldn't be here, and so Francis took over as the backup and led that meeting. That's basically it, I think.
The workshop as well, I also helped with that. But it was those two.
Yeah, that's correct. So whenever I couldn't make it, I would just give them a heads up.
Well, it sounds like John nominated me, Bill.
Are you interested?
I am interested.
Okay, amazing. John stepped away? Okay. Sure, I can wait for a second. I think it's a personal emergency call. Okay, I think, is it okay to move forward, Serena?
We have to, like, wait so we can second it and then vote.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Ready?
So we just need a second. John motion.
Oh, I second the nomination for Giselle.
Okay. Voting's open.
Approved four zero. Uh, Giselle, or sorry, now it's Secretary Luvanos. Did I say that right? Luvian, Luvano, sorry.
Luavenos.
Luavenos. I want to make sure I get it right. Abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you both for volunteering. Excited for this next year. We'll move on to item number four, City of Escondido Staff Monthly Update and Report.
And I'll mention this is being replaced by a presentation by Ed Vasquez.
Oh, okay.
This is an update.
Okay, Ed, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Hello. Hello, everyone. Good to see you again. So this is going to be a short presentation, kind of a high-level overview of what's been happening at the library so far. I'll provide as much specifics as you would like me to, or there is a question section at the end of the presentation, and we'll get started with that. Today's presentation agenda, overall progress, current construction progress, grant budget to date, future construction activity. Roof replacement, if you've driven by the library, you'll see that they are well ahead of getting this complete, probably over the next couple of weeks. They should be laying tile over the next two weeks. All the old tiles have been removed. The sheeting has been replaced, plywood replaced. New underlayment is where you see, that's why it looks all black. They're working on drip edges right now. This is kind of just, again, overview of the roof being completed. Everything with the roof, with the exception of a few areas, kind of was in good, in decent shape. We didn't have to go beyond. But keep in mind that complete replacement on the roof was not in our original budget. This was added on afterwards as a bid alternate item, and we were still able to cover this under the grant, the funding of the grant. Sewer line replacement, main reason why I wouldn't want to do a walkthrough right now, you'll see this kind of throughout. This is one of the main lines going out to that patio area, the little riser you see That's kind of where we're going to end up putting a clean-out before the main. The trenches is where you see the new sewer lines. These are new sewer lines that have been installed now. Top-left picture is where the two new bathrooms are, single-use bathrooms are going to be over by the friend space. Bottom-left is just going into the main bathrooms on the first floor. On the right is also one of the mains, kind of giving you a little bit background of why you see the green paint there. This is one of the challenges we've been encountering right now, that everything was poured around the sewer line, existing original sewer line, that's cast iron, which has made it a little bit of difficulty trying to get this replaced. Structural engineer has told us, do not cut that wall, do not chip away at the concrete, do not mess with these structural walls at all. So these are the items that we've been working on, finding a creative solution, which we have, building a little, we call it a little fur wall in front of this to be able to hide all the plumbing behind the wall. So it'll be this existing wall and another small, about six-inch wall in front of this that hides all the plumbing, and it doesn't affect what's going on inside the bathrooms. Moving on, new spaces framing. This is over where the old friend space used to be. Work with the overall framing is around 30% complete. Quiet study areas is complete. Friend space is in progress, and we'll see a couple pictures here coming, the next slide. New lines have been installed. I think I mixed up the sewer and the framing here. As we move on, the bottom right is a study quiet area that's pretty much completely framed. And then on the left side is a friend space that pretty much this whole wall all the way through is, they're almost framing. They haven't completed the framing because the bathrooms are abutted to that, so we'll have to wait to finish the sewer before they put concrete back, before we finish the framing. HVAC replacement is underway yesterday. This picture is actually from yesterday. The crane removed all the six units up there. They're working on demoing everything that was left behind, and also working on demoing the roof in that area to be able to fix any wood, any plywood, anything that's beneath those units before they bring the new units in. The old duct work is being removed. New system is scheduled to arrive over the next couple of weeks, and actually, we already have a few pieces on site that they're storing in the building as well. These are the old units being shipped away. They were in, they were in okay shape. They were kind of at the end of their life. Probably some of these units are 20-plus years old, and being commercial, always running, they were there. They needed to change, so. Just kind of just change orders to date overview. Complete demo, second-floor kitchen, that little area that serves both the staff and the public. Additional demo work, miscellaneous furniture. So when we put this out to bid, we did not know how much furniture or items were going to be left behind. Once we moved out and everything was cleared, there was additional costs associated with that. Complete roof replacement was an added item, too. We were going to do patch repairs, and because of the funding, we decided to move forward with the complete roof replacement. Abatement, additional abatement. When they did the initial inspection for hazardous materials throughout the library, although they looked everywhere, there were some areas that were unseen because they were under carpet and tile. So once they started demoing all the carpet and then found the layer of tile, then we were like, oh, under that layer of tile, there's more hazardous materials or abatement that needed to happen. So that's where these change orders have come in and actually increased the cost of the contract a little bit. Upcoming work over next four to five weeks, roofs, tile installation, you should probably see that next week, they're going to start doing that. The flat roof repair work is also underway. Sewer line completion, I'm looking at probably another two weeks in testing. That's going to happen. Once they pour the concrete over the new sewer, we're able to continue with the framing. They are still working on framing the little areas that they can, but this major areas where maker space or the other staff area where the books order is, is kind of on hold right now. And then installation of the new HVAC units and associated duct work with that. Any questions on any specific items that you may have? I can provide feedback.
Any update on windows? How much we're able to do?
So that's what I was just speaking with Reno about in my hand, and I didn't include this in there just because it's kind of my run-around list. I've got about 58 items right now that are potential change orders that have a dollar associated with them. Contractor is working on finalizing those dollar amounts, and it's been prioritized right now where, once we have these dollar amounts, we can make the decision on the windows. But before we can make the decision on the windows, because that dollar amount is so high, it's probably close to $850,000. Before we say yes on all the windows, we're waiting to finalize this list.
Okay.
So I expect that to happen around this, probably by the middle of September as well, where I'll have all these numbers dialed in, and I can say, okay, yes, to the windows, or we can make that decision then with staff.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Pretty much a macro question. So all the surprises have hopefully been uncovered, and you know what you have to address, or you've already addressed it?
Partially, yes and no, because this morning, we uncovered another surprise with electrical. You know, when they started removing the HVAC units, and we saw how things were tied in, it's, there's items up there that we need to fix, so there's another potential change order with those items. Sewer, yes. Duct work or framing, yes, we're good on those. There are little things that are coming up, like, you know, when you reconfigure an area, it's a trickle effect, right, with certain things, framing, electrical, you know, then you got drywall and other things that are associated with that. But I, besides this list, I do not anticipate another big list coming through, so we're pretty much there, where a lot of these surprises are out in the, you know, we know what they are at this point, right?
Okay, so at what point do you think you guys will be able to project what your end date is?
So as of today, our end date is still March 2026.
March, okay.
Spring 2026 is when our grant due deadline is. We should be complete by then. I won't, I won't know exactly if we're beyond that, probably until late into the year, once, once we got it to the point where we're rebuilding now and see if there's any delays. The delays I see or I'm anticipating are deliverables of, let's say, windows, or deliverables of specialized equipment, or things that are unforeseen and we have no control over. But hopefully, we're able to mitigate that, because we're trying to capture everything now, which is why this list is so big now. So that's part of the process, right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Next item is unfunded items workshop. Is this me? Okay. Am I giving you the update? Okay. So today, we talked about, we had, in attendance, the entire Library Board of Trustees. We had Friends of the Library. We had Escondido City reps. We had Reno Landau, and we had, did I say the Escondido Library Foundation Board? So the Andersons were there. We discussed mostly the second floor. It is penciled in that the Library Foundation would like to take on most of the children's space on the second floor, so we will get them better estimates in late September and have another workshop meeting in late September. At the September board meeting, the city, Robert and Ed will provide us a budget for unfunded first-floor items that we will vote for in the September 11th meeting. We are looking for help with the unfunded items on the second floor for literacy, which we'll follow up with the Friends or other community members in the future. So action items is a, hopefully, final workshop meeting in late September. We're voting on the first-floor unfunded items at the September board meeting, and we'll vote on any second-floor unfunded items at the October board meeting. Would anyone like to add anything to that?
Just a question that popped into my head. Robert, you probably are the best person to direct this to. We're going to be obviously tapping some trust fund money to help pay for the unfunded. We've all, we're getting closer to that point where we know the exact amount, or pretty much the exact amount. What processes have to take place so that the finance department, maybe they have to create a separate account in the trust fund for this?
We would not have to create a separate account. They can actually take it directly from whichever trust account number you were choosing to take it from. So for example, last year, when you voted to accept the, I believe it was $250,000, that is actually a separate account that is specifically being held. You can take it from that, and we can pay it directly from there.
Answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on this item? Okay, great. We'll move on to statistics report, item number six, presented by Reno.
Give me one moment while I load up the report.
While Reno's loading, I'll kill time by saying, Ed and Robert, I meant to say in the workshop meeting that you guys have, we started the workshop meeting because there were so many unfunded items that we were so worried about wanting to take care of, and now that we're, you know, a few months down the road, and we're hopefully going to be able to cover all the unfunded items, like, it's such a good problem to have and be able to solve, and you guys have done an amazing job with getting so much covered in the grant. So it's just, from what we started to where we're ending, huge difference, and thank you for all of the work that you've all put into it. Okay, Reno, did I stall enough for you?
Yes, you did. Thank you. So today, I am presenting the monthly statistic reports. We are looking at stats from April, May, and June of this year. Main thing to note in this month is that we finally have stats for the location at the mall, which would be the June stats. Looking at these, I'll mention the, we anticipated an impact in May for the library closure and transition. We, while we did try to maintain as many services possible while at the Pioneer Room during the month of May, we, of course, do see a dip there in both circulation, because circulation effectively stopped completely. And so what you're seeing there are returns and already pending items that were checked out, or checked out out of the Pioneer Room during that month, because we did a continued circulation there. What we'll see, and will be more notable in next month's report, is the fact that the visits and circulation at the mall locations, you can already see the trend here, where we're beginning to climb up. In June, we had nearly 28,000 physical items checked out, and we had nearly 20,000 visits at the mall locations. Those have continued to trend up in July. For reference, the average monthly attendance at the main library in downtown was about 20,000 per month. So we've essentially reached the average, and we've more or less matched the attendance levels from last year at the main library here at the mall and the locations we currently have. Of course, once we have more data, I'll be able to present a more comprehensive report of the library at the mall, but so far, trends, at least in visits, program attendance and circulation are all trending in the right direction, which is up to at least match or get very close to matching those numbers from the downtown library. The only thing we can't match is, of course, computer use, because we have four computers as opposed to more than 30 computers at the old location. So you will see, and you'll continue to see, lower stats as far as computer usage is concerned. Same with Wi-Fi. Because we are in a good spot in that there is Wi-Fi coverage, not just from the library, but also from Target and the mall in general, we're finding that we're getting less wireless connections, because very likely, those users are either staying on one of those other Wi-Fi networks, either the Target one, which is nearby, or the mall-provided Wi-Fi, and especially in the Wi-Fi lounge. Programs, we started in earnest later in June and all of July, is when we saw programs kind of come back up, especially with our reading challenge during July, and just finishing up a couple of weeks ago at the start of August. So the program stats have increased from the 47 programs you see hosted in June. Now we're closer to the typical number. We're still building up as we find more spaces either to present in the mall. The mall's been a very good partner with us, offering us storefronts and community areas that aren't being used, for example, to use as a quiet spot for our meditation classes, some of our book clubs, and similar type of events. But it's taking staff and everybody time to figure out what will work, and so that's where we're seeing a little bit of a dip in the number of programs offered. But I will mention that the attendance for especially your teen and tween programs have increased pretty substantially as compared with the downtown library. Again, it's too early to make any definitive conclusions from the data, but it is giving us good hopes as far as where to look for to compare between current data and past data. So for example, teen and tween programs, we'll be looking closely at, see what impact being at the mall has done. Similarly, with the adult programs, or for the children's programs, the same effect is have us being at the mall reduced attendance at any type of program. Again, we're still getting that data, but that's what we're looking forward to having for you in the near future. Are there any questions based on just the stats for this month? Any comments?
Quick question. Reference questions went up almost 3,000. Is that based on the new location, or what did your hypothesis say?
I suspect that the reference transactions can also tend to include some directional questions, even though staff are trained not to include them. So a lot of it can be a buildup. It might be they call because they're not quite sure where the library is at the mall, and then they have a follow-up question that is a reference transaction. So I do expect that a lot of these have to do with more learning what procedures have changed, where is the library, are you still at the downtown location, where are you coming back? A lot of those type is where I see there's a jump, especially since that aligns well with, you know, the opening months of the library being at the mall.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question. Volunteers seems to, I don't know, you've got 34 for the last two months. Is that just, I'm just curious why that is?
From those months, the only real volunteers we had available were the Friends of the Library, and essentially, those reflect the active board members and then the supports members for the bookshop. That's around what they hover, it's in 34 to 40. In July, the total active volunteers will have increased, not only because we'll have reflected the teen volunteers we received during the summer, but also towards the end of June, the Friends bookshop had a better idea of how many volunteers they need to run it, and also our staff. The reality is, we have a need as many shovers, as we call them, or pages, given the reduced floor print of the two library locations. So we've also had less of a need for certain types of volunteers, so we haven't been as active in recruitment. But really, the main hit is coming from the Friends of the Library and how they normally would be supporting us.
Thank you.
I can step in with a question. So the mall cooperating with letting us storefronts to have some of our programming, is that coming, like, as additional cost, or is that just part of the agreement in them supporting the library?
Essentially, we're using it as part of the agreement. The city did provide extra funding to make sure that we'd have access to shared spaces and shared resources, and in a way, that's included. But I do want to mention that the staff at the mall have been very open to letting us use spaces and flexing in a way that was probably beyond the scope of, as written in the contract.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thanks, Reno. Move on to the library director's report.
I don't have a lot, but I do want to bring some points to your attention. Just like in the past, we have now installed security cameras in the mall locations. Those weren't available at the very beginning due to both sourcing and also our compressed timeline to open to the public as quickly as possible. But the cameras have now been installed, and they provide great coverage of the public areas, storefronts, and this includes the Friends storefront, so the bookstore, the event space, and, you know, the two general storefronts. Benefit of the cameras is that I guess is informing that they will be retained for once we return to the main library. Other questions or other follow-up points for today? Other questions, or other follow-up points for today? Some of you may or may not be aware that the Law Library, the San Diego Law Library, offers in partnership with us both one-on-one help, it's twice a month, and also we use to offer a dedicated computer station, well two of them, the Law Library computers, for access to databases that are only available through subscription at the San Diego Law Library. We are now working with IS to make sure that we have laptops available to connect to those Law Library resources, while continuing to offer, which has been going on since we reopened, the Law Librarian visiting the law, the mall locations. While not an immensely popular service, it is used, and we have patrons from all backgrounds stopping by either to speak with the Law Librarian on those two days a month, or to access some of those resources, since we're one of the, we're really the only library in North County that has this partnership with the San Diego Law Library. And so it really offers those legal resources. Here in North County, you would otherwise have to drive down to the Law Library for, or go to somewhere nearby, let's say the Carlsbad or Oceanside, which may have those resources, but may not have the exact access as what we offer through the San Diego Law Library. Last but not least, before I move on to our highlights, we did receive two book returns. So the city has purchased those. They have been delivered. Now we're just in the process of installing. The first walk-up, so the walk-up location has been installed, and I will send you all photos probably tomorrow. And then we're just waiting on the drive-up return. The placement of the drive-up and walk-up book returns were decided based on input from mall management. And so they have their own concerns, based on our initial recommendations of where we would envision them going. So these final locations were approved by mall management, and the city is working with them to finish the install. Like I said, the walk-up one has been installed. That is located in the southern entrance. So if you park next to the Target, and in between, and closest to, if you remember, there's a car, electric car charging zone, the book drop isn't located quite in that interest. It's located to the right of it, because you'll see there's a Wells Fargo ATM. We're just opposite that. So not exactly the location shown here, but more in this area. The drive-up location is pictured. This is where we're anticipating the installation, and this is on the north side of the mall. So you would likely do the loop if you're coming off the highway, to then go in. And right now, this area is under construction for a new storefront, I believe is coming, which is round one. So once round one is complete, this will be a nice location for a lot of traffic. Currently, it's not as heavily trafficked, but it's still a fine solution for giving our patrons an option for drive-up book returns. Before I move on to the highlights, any questions about these three updates?
For the drive-up return, it looks like it is farther away from the mall than any other return probably ever in the history of the library. Is there a cart, or how does that work?
We will have our staff within, believe it or not, within each of the returns, there is a little self-built cart. So we either move the whole cart in when we're bringing back books, or we swap it with an empty one. And so yes, it is a bit of a walk as compared to the walk-up one, which is close. The benefit of this drive-up one is that the back entrance to some areas, there's a little back entrance, a hallway, that leads right next to here. It actually empties out right next to the Friends bookstore. So we have some options where thankfully our staff don't have to walk too far out in weather, whether it's good or bad. But yes, unfortunately, based on the mall's arrangements with some of the other tenants, there are certain areas that are protected, as they call it, parking. We ran into that issue with the Target area. But I think for our purposes, we found these to be acceptable, and we can make, we can make most things work, but we were fine with these.
Cool, thank you.
Not a question, but a comment. So that's great with the Law Librarian, and that getting restored up come September. Just a note to definitely be sure to share that widely, because even if, you know, like a did you know, especially for the first and third Thursdays, I'm not sure if, you know, if you rely on that Law Library Librarian to provide some of the types of things that, you know, that are maybe frequently looked up, legal resources, again, and making it clear that it's not an attorney, but these are legal resources that are available just to kind of learn about and discover. So just promotion for that, I think, would be great, once it's all restored up.
Of course. And echoing back on the idea of promotion, you'll start seeing more marketing and materials about the book drops, once the second one is installed. And we want to make a package, and we really want to make sure everybody knows that those are active again, and where to find them. Because we already know from experience that just finding the mall is one issue, and then finding the library within the mall is another issue for a lot of patrons. So we keep trying to make sure that our communications on those make sense, and are clear, and accessible.
When does round one open?
I don't know, but I do know that they're working on it. Robert, do you know?
I do actually know the answer to this question. So round one is expected to open by the end of this calendar year. So by December, it should be open.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's essentially almost advertising for the library with that drive-up return spot, so.
Reno, are these book returns like the metal ones that we, so what happens after we move back home?
Once, so first question, yes, these are skirty steel outdoor-designed book returns. We have multiple options. One, we can of course move them and reinstall them, just like to replace existing book returns, which are in fine shape. Another option, which is too early to discuss, but if the city chooses to retain a library location at the mall, then we could consider keeping one or both of them there to serve in that effect.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll just mention quickly, the highlights, they're a little light today. Believe it or not, a lot of people were on vacation, either at the end of July or at the start of the month. But as we mentioned, I did send to the board more information about the Catalyst Grant, provided by the Society of American Archivists. You'll also start seeing a lot more marketing of that coming up for participants. And we'll be doing that both in English and Spanish, given the type of the project and the focus on capturing Hispanic voices and Hispanic memory, so Spanish-speaking. And so we'll be seeing more of that. But we have started the, this week, to begin kind of the testing and the workflows for capturing that according to the grant timeline provided in the application. So we're really excited about this, and we look forward to expanding this, if it's successful, and really supporting it in the Pioneer Room and beyond, as we practice and get the staff used to the procedures. Other highlights, essentially, programs have been ongoing. You see some highlights here. Adult programs have been successful. Some of the adult programs have been those that we've had to work with the mall to find quieter spaces, as some of them, like meditation, aren't very conducive to having open sound coming in from the mall. Again, mall management and staff have been very helpful in finding those locations. Same for youth, although the youth, because sound is less of an issue, we've been taking liberal advantage of having access to the floor, on the first floor, what they call centric court, where they have a lot of their family and open public events. You'll find our storytimes there. You'll also find a lot of our teen and tween programs in the event space, along with our adult arts and crafts programs. Our goal has been to have as much, if not 100% of library programs at the mall, either in the event space, center court, or in one of those shared community spaces. So we've really drastically reduced and zeroed out any need for the public or staff to come up to, say, the Mathis Center classroom. Again, to build on that sense of the library being at the mall, even if it's temporary, so that people realize where we are, and how to find us, and what's available. And that's it for my report for this month. I'm open to questions.
I know we don't have a bookmobile, but in terms of if staff need to transport anything between the mall and the Calmio location, are they using personal vehicles, or is there like a city-issued car? How does that work, just in terms of liability?
They are covered, great question. For anything where the staff have to, say, come up to the downtown campus, Mathis Center, et cetera, one, it's very limited, and two, typically, we cover it under LSNS's insurance, and we also reimburse them for mileage, LSNS does. We do not have a city vehicle, since we are not city staff. But, for example, we have worked with the city for accepting mail packages and other items that are larger here at City Hall, and staff come by to pick those up, especially those that work here in the downtown campus. The majority of our mail and everything else is directly sent to the mall location. So again, it's very rare. The main people coming up north, as we might say, are our customer service staff, primarily Aspen, or operations manager to pull items from storage here. Next month, I can provide more of a detail of how much that is, but it's about, once a week is when staff come up here, and the total requests from off-site storage have been less than 50 a month so far. It may grow, and it might result in some changes into the frequency or procedures, but that right now, almost all of the circulation is coming out of the storefront locations.
Okay, great, thank you.
Reno, just a question for you directly, totally off-topic, but it's part of your report. Around this time of year, we usually see your yearly budget, and so I was wondering if you can give an update on that?
We have, the yearly collection budget is essentially done, so it'll be ready for next year, or not this year, next month. I can also send it to the board before the meeting for deeper review. As in the past, the total amount has remained unchanged. Main changes you'll note will be an increase to children's budget categories, reflective of the increased use in children. So we are trying to align year by year more of the budget with circulation data. Any other changes you might note would be the cancellation of a few library databases that were no longer being used. The main one that you might recall would be Flipster, which had very few uses, and the renewal cost more than $10,000. It was $11,000. So rather than using those funds for Flipster, we rediverted those almost essentially to children's, Overdrive, and a very modest increase to Hoopla, just to keep the budget cap. We basically pushed up the budget cap for Hoopla just a little bit, to see if that has any impact on the total number of downloads per month. Those are the main changes, just at a top level. But I can make sure to include an update for the collections budget next year, and I believe the city's library budget, which is separate from our LSNS budget and collection budget. I'm sure I can work with Robert to give an overview of the 2025, 2025, 2026 library budget from the city perspective.
Okay, and then Robert, I would just like to ask you, and I wish John was here. I know that he was inquiring about raising the budget for library collection from the city. How did that go, and is there any update from that?
I have no updates on that at this time. I was on vacation for the most of July, and unfortunately, the city manager is currently out at a conference in DC. I do have a scheduled meeting with him next week.
Okay, and then could you briefly, because I don't think, I think I know about it, because he copied me on the email, but could you briefly give an overview what John's request was to the rest of the trustees?
So John's request was essentially to increase the collections budget. Right now, the collections budget has been stagnant for the full eight years of the contract with LSNS. It was established at $250, but there was no increase to that budget on an annual basis, based on cost of living, or consumer index, something along those lines. So it has been stagnant for that period of time. His request was to increase it to what it should be, and then we're, I'll work out those details with the city manager, provided that he is, would like to go forward with that.
Okay, could we add that as an agenda item for the next one, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I'll mention a quick correction, and Robert mentioned $250, it is $250,000.
Yes.
Should we all know this?
That would be very small, wouldn't it? Yeah, $250,000.
To anybody listening.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, so I think that's the end of your report. Is there any other questions for Reno? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the trustee library use report. Can I share real quick? It's a request from the community, the chess club. It's very much missed. They are blogging about it on social media. There is Facebook Moms Group that's trying to get everyone to email you and Dan. What is the likelihood of bringing back the chess club, and how soon?
Excellent point. I actually spoke with Dan right before coming here about this. It has always been the plan to restart the chess club, I believe. The timing has been unfortunate in that the staff, after moving, then had to quickly get started with the summer reading challenge. And the honest answer is that the chess club was left behind in the priority list, but it's back towards the top again. And it won't take us very long. Right now, we just secured confirmation from the mall of a location. Again, because the chess club necessitates a more quiet space, we couldn't just have them be in the event space, which is open to all the sounds of the mall. But we now have a community room on the second floor of the mall that will be used for the chess club. And right now, it's just going through the process of confirming with our volunteer, who runs the chess club for us, to make sure that they can still continue to do so. And if not, we're already prepared to look for alternatives for a continuation of the club. We realize how important it is to those that attend, and just in general, for the community as a resource for both culture and fun, as I know some people who play chess and really enjoy it. And I really appreciate the fact that the community is so engaged and so willing to ask about it. But we have not forgotten, and I anticipate probably in September, it won't likely be on the printed calendar initially, but we are aiming to have that, if not in September, in October at the latest. But we are working to get it back on to the schedule, and back into the library, even if it's at our mall location, as soon as possible.
Thank you Reno. Mary Bell?
I can go next, but I think it'd be great if we can, once that's all scheduled in, maybe put that on social media, since the request is primarily coming, I imagine, through social media. And I think your kiddos, Francis, were doing chess, right?
They have participated in the past.
I, this month, last month, have really been using Hoopla. So I started a series, and most of them are on Libby, but some of the, part of the series weren't. And also, I'll be honest, I didn't want to wait the six to eight weeks it projected. And so I hopped on Hula, and I think I got three downloads this last month. And at very random times, like one, it was like super early, no issues. The other time, I feel it was like mid-month, and it was like 11 o'clock at night. And I was like, oh, I don't know if I'll be able to, you know, because it might have been capped out, but I was still able to. And so my experience with Hoopla this month has been pretty, pretty good. Regarding the mall location, I like the layout of the Spanish books. They're, I think, easier for me to kind of browse through than they were at the regular mall. And so my little one, he's on a dinosaur binge right now. So we've been reading a lot of those dinosaur Spanish books.
I can go next. I was just there on Monday, and it was, it was busy. It was great to see it all in use. I was in both the children's library side and the main side. I was with my son. And I want to just comment on how clean it was. Everyone was really friendly. I know I introduced myself to, I believe, Olga, and to Chuck. So they were very helpful. So just commending that, you know, upkeep of this space, it's, it's looking clean. And I would agree, very easy, like the stacks in terms of the spacing between them, ease of navigating and finding everything, all looked great. So, great work.
I've been here, visited the mall with my kids. I found, right after they took their books out, they immediately I found right after they took their books out, they immediately wanted to read the books in the sitting areas outside of the library and they found that to be extremely comfortable. So just wanted to call that out, that people are using those other spaces within the mall that are already there to, you know, leverage stuff with the library. A couple of people in my neighborhood recommended the library mall and how nice it was and I think more families are considering that on weekends as a place to go and not only go to the mall, but do other things there as well. Tended the unfunded Items Workshop right before this and the only thing I have is I want to say thank you to Virginia for being president for the last year, two years, just incredibly dedicated to the community and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting.